Okay, the regular meetings for the Planning Commission is called to order. We're gonna have a moment of silent prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
You stand, hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Joanne, could you please rule call?
Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
And we have a new commissioner joining us, Commissioner Castellanos?
Here.
And chair hang.
We have no minutes for approvals, so we will move on to oral communication. Would anyone like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? I guess. Seeing none, tonight we have no items on the consent calendar, so we will proceed to the public hearings.
No public hearing.
Oh, we don't have public hearings on this hearing.
Non-hearing items.
Okay, we're gonna move on to non-hearing item. Tonight, we will consider the initiations of Code Amendment number 25-01 to bring the city into compliance with State Senate Bill number 9, which took effect on January 1st, 2022, or 25. SB 9, or the new one. Well, Joanne, who will present the staff report?
I'll be presenting the staff report. Just a bit of background and history on Senate Bill 9. The Code Amendment is actually a consideration, this is actually a consideration of a Code Amendment, to initiate the Code Amendment so that it is consistent with SB Senate Bill 450, which revised Senate Bill 9. So a little bit background on Senate Bill 9. Senate Bill 9 was signed by the governor on September 2021 and took effect on January 1st, 2022. It mandated to allow multifamily, ultimately multifamily residential development on single-family lots, and it allowed small lots subdivisions on single-family lots, which are lots with a minimum lot size of 1,200 square feet. And it also mandates that municipalities approve the said division in housing construction ministerially without any public hearings. Sorry, I just realized that the slideshow is not showing. On September 2024, to clarify some language that is contained within SB 9, the California Department of Housing and Community Development released a fact sheet, and in the fact sheet it clarifies that lot splits are not mandatory for SB 9 or UDU, which is Urban Dwelling Unit And the cities must allow at least four residential units per R1 law with or without the lot split. So just to put things in perspective and also to visualize things, this is what is currently allowed, and the state says is allowed through just simply SB 9, which is, it allows up to four units. These are, the examples on the projector are just different housing types that can, that the state is saying that we have to allow. So up to four units per single-family residential lots that can take the form of two UDU's, each with ADUs attached, an urban lot split with two UDU's per lot, standard single-family residential house with a junior ADU and a detached ADU in the back, or a duplex UDU with two detached ADUs. Each ADUs would be, would belong to each of the primary unit UDU's. And then, primary unit with an ADU and a UDU with another ADU attached to each one. So these are just examples of what can now be located in a single-family residential lot by right per HCD, per HCD's interpretation of SB 9. And then since SB 9 was signed, SB 450 was signed September 2024, and it became effective January 1st of this year. They removed the language that state, that is shown on the projector, which is a 20% demolition exception conditions. It also states that cities are not, are allowed to impose objective standards, but the standards that are imposed would have to apply uniformly to the underlying zone, which is the R1 zone. We can't adopt standards that are not applicable to normal single-family residential development, to a normal house addition or construction. The previous law also allowed building officials to deny projects if they have an adverse impact on public health, safety, or the physical environment. The physical environment was removed from that language. So building officials can only deny it if it has adverse impact on health and safety. 450 also added timeframes for action, so once an application is submitted, staff has to approve it by right within 60 days of receiving the application, or deny the application within 60 days. And if you are going to deny an application, you have to list all the things that are wrong with the application and what needs to be revised on the plans. If action is not taken within 60 days, then it is deemed approved. And SB 450 also clarified language exemptions. Cities are allowed to deny SB 9 application if the location that they're applying for is within a high-fire severity area, prime farmland, and so forth. So it clarified where this language is to be located within the government code, and also it clarified the date, that this starts on the timeframe that, where SB 9 was first signed, which is in September 2022, or 2021.
Joanne, real quick, before you go on to the next slide, with regard to allowing the city to impose objective standards, when you say the city, are you talking about the city council or the commission, or are you talking about in an administrative context?
The code, the municipal code. We already have objective standards.
Well, no, 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 but I'm saying, who, let's say hypothetically, there was a denial because something failed to uphold to the standards that are to apply uniformly in the underlying zone. Who is making that decision? Is that, is that an administrative decision, or is that a Planning Commission decision?
It really depends on a case-by-case basis, on what's being reviewed and what's being applicable, but the, I guess, if we are gonna have objective design standards, the best thing to do is to just make it clear. We do, the city does already have objective design standards, but we can, I have slides that we can, we can go over, and it would be discussing the objective design standards specifically of what we have, and we're looking for the Planning Commission's direction on what we can recommend to the city council, the city council adopt, based on what we have.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
So for different types of applications and projects, there are different designations or delegations of authority. So for the projects that the city council will be approving, it would be the city council as the city, and if it is denied by the Planning Commission, it would be the Planning Commission. And if it's an administrative review, then the administrative, whoever is making that determination, would be acting on behalf of the city.
Right, right. And what I was getting at is SB 9 and SB 450, I think, this is my recollection in terms of my reading of it, it's specifically administrative-level standards, right? It is not, unless, for example, you guys administratively denied something, and there was an appeal to Planning Commission or something like that, it would be something that we wouldn't be handling, it would be something that largely would be an internal decision by administrative staff, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. That was what I was trying to get at.
Okay. And we are allowed, we are, I believe there is an exemption on the objective design standards. You're allowed to impose objective design standards if it's less, even though it's different from the standards within the underlying zone, if it's considered, if it's considered less strict than that underlying zone standards. So currently, this is a comparison of state law and the city-specific standards that we've adopted to address or in response to the state law. So state says that we have to allow at least an 800-square-foot unit, and we're saying that our maximum is gonna be 800 square feet. And the minimum is 500. No setback is required for existing structures, and usually for existing structures, we allow it to remain anyway, so that's not going to be an issue. And then the maximum side setback and rear setback for new construction is four feet, and we are, we've adopted that. And this is also consistent with ADU minimum required setback, the four feet. They had eliminated, an applicant must occupy one of the housing units for a minimum of three years. This is only applicable for urban lot splits. It's not applicable if somebody just wants to construct an urban dwelling unit or an SB 9 unit if they are not subdividing the law. No short-term rental, the city does not allow short-term rentals within its jurisdiction. And we, the city can only require parking if it's within a quarter-mile from a transit corridor or high transit zone. In the city, I guess, in the city-specific standards, we state that the maximum they can have is one-story, except, with the exception of they're allowed two-story if they cannot build at least an 800-square-feet UDU on their property without having to go on the second floor. And for, in, I guess, in regards to our interpretation, this is less strict than what we have, because what we have currently for the underlying zone is if you are going to go to two-story, you need an administrative review with notice, and you're required to go through Subcommittee Design Review Subcommittee. So we are not requiring Design Review Subcommittee for UDU's. And then the 50% front yard landscaping, the city already has that for the underlying zone, and I believe that we currently, if somebody's gonna have a UDU on the property, if there's no garage, we currently limit it to 12 feet maximum driveway width, but I believe that that would, that the city would have to eliminate that requirement. We're not allowed to limit it to 12 feet without a garage. So we would have to go with our standard 20 feet if there is no garage. Residents not eligible for, residents of the UDU are not eligible for street parking. I don't believe that's really an objective design standard. That's just something that we, that we state in our code to make it clear for people that are building or wanna build UDU's, that they, the residents are not gonna be issued street parking if a parking permit is gonna be required for that street, and street parking issuance is up to each jurisdiction anyway. So the state should not have any issues with that. Must comply with objective design standards. And then next slide is gonna be the city's current objective design standards. For additions, we require that it utilize the same color materials, rough pitch, and architectural style of, as existing structure. For new construction, we require that it have at least a six-by-six front porch, at least two building materials on each elevation. In the current objective design standards, it's required on all elevations, however, in our design guidelines for Subcommittee Design Review, we only, we only require single-family residential construction, normal single-family residential construction, to have alternative materials in the front elevation and two feet, and wraparound two feet on the side. We don't require it on all elevations. So I believe this portion would have to be modified. Window treatment, stucco pop-ups, wood trim, pot shelves, et cetera, what is required. And then, second, if they're gonna be having a second floor on the side elevations, they're required to have at least, there are clear-story windows on the side, and no balconies, no exterior stairs, and no decks. Roof design, no flat roofs or shed roofs, it has to be pitched or gable, dutch, or hipped. And then they have to choose at least two different color palettes. So most of these items can remain, mostly because, for single-family residential construction, if it's, if it's something that's visible on the street, from the street view, then it requires Subcommittee Design Review. So having these objective design standards listed and saying that they have to follow it is, can be viewed as less strict. The commission also has the option of recommending that these standards be reflective or be adopted for regular single-family residential construction as well, and use the Subcommittee as a means to have the Subcommittee decide if some of these items are necessary or not necessary in that sense. So staff is looking for direction from the Planning Commission on, if the Planning Commission wishes to add more objective standards or delete some of the current objective standards for SB 9 or urban dwelling unit construction. With that, if the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution and provide staff direction on the contents of the Code Amendment. If the Planning Commission adopts the resolution, the public hearing will be scheduled at a later time in notice per the city's municipal code and state law, and we will come back with the draft language and go through the normal public hearing process.
I have a, just a couple of quick questions with regard to how it says additions, and then there's the discussion about roof design. There are some, there are some homes in the city that do have flat roofs. How are you able to be in compliance with that, when you have to use the same architecture as the existing structure?
Oh, if, if it's an existing, the pitch rough and requirement only applies to, only applies to, I guess, properties with pitch roofs. So ultimately, it has to be consistent with all the existing structures on that property. So if you have a pitch rough on the existing house, you can't build a UDU that's a flat rough.
Okay, understood. So, but what I'm saying is the opposite of that. So let's say you have a flat roof, single-family residence, and you wanna build a UDU or something like that, my question is, how are you going to be architecturally consistent when that's not permitted? I guess, maybe I'm misunderstanding something.
So if, okay, so if a house has a flat rough, or an existing house has a flat rough?
Yeah.
Then you wanna build a UDU?
Right.
You have a flat rough. We typically, we typically make exceptions and do allow a flat rough, just to make it consistent with the existing structure. And we do currently allow that exception, but if they, but if they wanted to have a flat rough, but their existing structure, the existing primary structure on the property is a pitch rough, then they wouldn't be able to have it.
Yeah, I'm not, again, I'm not advocating for that, I'm just saying that with the state being very harsh about objective standards, if that is an exception, I think we need to be very careful about whatever we do as far as exceptions, so that we're not, you know, ending up, you know, embroiling the city in litigation over some, something like that down the line, because somebody says, oh, you know, their objective standards aren't really objective standards, there's exceptions built in, and, you know, blah, blah, blah. I'm just saying, I, those are things, again, I like to have objective standards, I just wanna make sure that, to the extent that we have surveyed what is in the city currently, and to the extent that we are requiring consistency with the architecture of the existing structure, that we're not, we're not, you know, in a position to shoot ourselves in the foot from a litigation standpoint.
Understood. So we can, we can make sure that the language is clear, that for additions and new construction, new, I guess, urban dwelling units on developed lots have to match the architectural style and materials that are existing in those developed lots.
So these subdivisions, they can only be requested by residents, correct? Not by government officials or the state?
By residentes. Or property owners.
So technically, this subdivision, even though it's required to subdivide?
It's not required.
No longer required.
It's no longer required to subdivide.
It's opposite.
Okay.
So they, initially, when it first came out, it was not, it alluded that you're required to do the subdivision, but then the state has a new interpretation, a newer interpretation that says you don't have to have a subdivision.
So if you had a large parcel and you wanted to build, divide it into four and sell it off, you wouldn't need to subdivide it into different APNs?
No, if you are gonna separate it and sell it off as separate lots, then you do have to subdivide it. But you also have the right to construct up to four residential units on the property without a subdivision.
And you can sell the ADU, right?
Only if subdivided.
No, I don't, I think that that changed as well. I think you can sell the ADU, you don't have to sell the underlying lot. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. The most recent, the most recent updates to the ADU laws said that there is a separate conveyance allowed on an ADU, just not on a JADU.
So that would mean essentially that you could sell the building, not the land, so it's kinda like a mobile home park?
Like a condo.
I believe it also, it also depends on who the developer is.
How would that work?
Because it has to be developed by a housing organization. So it also depends on who the property owner and the developer is. So in order to subdivide an AD, to sell off an ADU, the developer and the property owner has to be a housing corporation. Like Habitat for Humanity or something similar to that.
Not sure how the bank's gonna lend you the money for ADU. That would be interesting.
Yeah, that'll be their problem.
How would they lend on it if the, you know, is it leased land? It's not a fee simple, it's, you know, how would they, you know, you don't own the land, so how could you finance just a home without the land? Then it would be a mobile home park.
Without the subdivision, it would be under one ownership? So if you have an SB 9 property like this, the diagram is already skipped, but on the slide with the various permutations of the primary units and the UDU's, until you're selling, until the property is sold, you wouldn't need to subdivide. So all four units, so the two primary units, the primary and the UDU, and the two ADUs would be all under the same ownership.
So how would that work for taxes, tax purposes, property taxes?
That's the assessor's problem.
They won't find a way to get the money.
The primary owner would be stuck paying the tax while the ADU wouldn't be responsible.
Because it would be under the same ownership.
Right. Well, it wouldn't be, because the ADU would have new ownership, and how would that grant deed work? I mean, there has to be a parcel number to be able to grant the deed to another owner as part of the property. It would have to have another parcel number.
Right. With the ADU being sold separately from the underlying primary unit, it would be housing corporations, and I'm pretty sure Habitat for Humanity is gonna have their tax lawyers to look into that. I am not a tax lawyer, so I cannot opine as to tax issues.
It's pretty easy, though. I mean, because it's just like the concept of condos, where you don't own the underlying land.
You're gonna get assessed for the additional living space.
So you get a separate.
You're gonna get assessed for the ADU, as, you know, anything you build on your property, you're gonna get reassessed for the additional living space. So at that point, your taxes are going to increase for the existing parcel. So when you do sell it, they're not gonna pay the tax, you're still gonna pay it with the increased tax. You're still going to pay it with the increased tax. Because the, the value of the, of the property itself is going to increase with the, you know, anytime you put an ADU, there you go, 500,000, there you go, increase your, your value on your property. So they'll be getting, you know, if they were, they had taxes at a million before, they'll get taxes at a million five at that point. And how do they pass that on?
I don't think that necessarily that would really, the, the, the challenges that, or messes that could be created by allowing this, I don't think that we really have to concern ourselves with. That'll be.
Yes, that's a problem for later.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think would affect anything with regard to, you know, our initiation of this code amendment. I mean, good points, but yeah, I think that'll be for anyone who chooses to involve themselves with something new like this, is asking for a potential mess, but hey, who cares, right? I mean.
Going back to the slideshow where the objective list or items, the porch area, you know how like it has a six by six area? Some houses do not have porch. How do we, I guess, incorporate that into the new?
If they're going to be, like say, a vacant lot, if they're going to be building an urban dwelling, two urban dwelling units and an, an, an ADU on, on those lots, then they have, they're required to have a porch.
So if it's an existing house with no porch, you're saying that if they're, if they're building a UDU, they don't be, it's not needed for the porch area, six by six?
It's only for the UDU.
So if, okay, so if someone has an existing house right now that does not have a porch currently, and if they're using, they're building a U, a UDU, does that mean that the new UDU are required to have porch? Even though the existing house do not?
Yes.
But how is that being consistent with the main house?
Well, it's consistent with the architectural style, right? It's consistent with the architectural style of the house. As long as it's consistent with the architectural style of the house, roof pitch, colors and materials, then, then we're allowed to do it. Because we have single-family residential design guidelines that go through a subcommittee that, that's basically state, that basically states or recommends that single-family residential houses have porches or something that, that shows where the front, makes, makes the front elevation look more appealing, so.
I think it'll be an easy thing to comply with though, since it's only six by six also, that's pretty small. I mean, someone could go bigger if they want a bigger, but six by six, that's, that'll be pretty small if someone, you know, doesn't necessarily want to go too big.
I, you mentioned they can go bigger. We are not going to allow anything bigger than a six by six porch.
Okay, so it'll be.
Mostly because if we allow porches or other storage sheds attached to it or anything attached to it, then they can convert those into floor area.
Got it.
And they can, they can make it bigger than 100 square feet as a loophole.
Got it.
Sorry, so it's not really a minimum, it's a max. It's a max and a min.
It's a max, it's a maximum.
It's a maximum, but not a minimum?
No, it's.
No, they can have it smaller.
Wait, so it has to be exactly six by six, basically, okay.
When, when, when I say they can have it smaller, I mean that if they want it smaller than 100 square feet, they can. The, the, I'm sorry, I got confused, the, the units. The porch, the maximum they can have, the minimum and the maximum is six by six.
Just curious, I, I know this is, I know this particular concept is new, but in terms of objective design standards, have we, have we surveyed surrounding cities in terms of, you know, some of the objective design standards that they have and whether or not those are things that we might want to consider?
When we first adopted some of our objective design standards, we did. And there are cities that have, there are no objective design standards. And there are cities that have more stricter objective design standards that the state has deemed that, that is not allowed. Because it makes it harder for, for a developer or property owner to build an, an accessory, urban dwelling unit or an SB nine unit on the property. So they, the last, I spoke to somebody from HCD was last, I believe, November, around November of, of last year. And I, we discussed our objective design standards at length. And, and they didn't say, they didn't say that we weren't allowed to, to apply it or, or that we didn't comply with state law based on our objective design standards. And the reason why I had to speak to them was because somebody, somebody wanted to build a UDU and ADU on the same, on the same property and have, and basically have two primary units and one accessory dwelling unit on the same property. And prior to the September 2024 fact sheet, it was understood that that was not allowed. And then so the person that submitted the application told the state on us. And then so I had a meeting with the state and they provided me that fact sheet and basically said that we have to allow it.
Okay, so, but, but in terms of, so, so I guess, I guess the question is, to the extent that there are objective design standards that are out there that, you know, perhaps we haven't considered, that may be meaningful to, to our residents, is that something that we can look into? Obviously, we don't, I, I would say, in, in terms of direction, I would probably recommend is looking into that. Obviously, I don't think it makes sense to go overboard on it, but to the extent that, to the extent that we can, you know, beautify our city, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Yes.
So I, I think that would kind of encompass what my recommendation would be, but, you know, certainly open it up.
Yes, we, as part of the, the research, staff can go look into other surrounding cities and see what they have and see how, how it lines up with ours.
Yeah, obviously, I'm not talking about, you know, going and surveying a city that is, you know, having ongoing problems with HCD. I, I would, I would think that would be ill-advised, notwithstanding my rather strong opinions about HCD and bureaucratic overreach, but that's neither here nor there.
But this law is pretty new too, I mean, since September, that's only three months ago. And it's just taken to effect January, which is now. So it's relatively new. I'm not sure if most city has already adapted all that.
Oh, every city, every city already has objective design standards to the extent that they, to the extent that they do. We're just trying to figure out, you know, are there objective design standards we want to incorporate into, into the ordinance that, that we're looking to initiate here?
But it's constantly changing too, because the law, the new law, the SB four five zero just got passed September. So when that changes, we also, or city also has to update their codes or their objective.
Right, but the, the design standards for, for UDU's are, are already in place. This just makes it more, more expansive. That's, that's all it does. The design standards, like these, these are already our design standards and other cities already have these standards. I think what they're trying, I think what staff is trying to, to get from us is direction as to whether or not we want to stick with these standards, we want to have additional standards, we want to lessen the standards, those types of things.
And the planning commission doesn't have to decide tonight on what to, to do, but if you do have something in mind right now, then, then we will take note of that. But if not, then, then we, we can decide on it at a, at a later time. But we, but per Commissioner Lewis's direction and suggestion, staff will be looking into other cities on what other cities have and see if, based on what we find, if we can beef up what we have so that it's beneficial for our city.
And if not, the state will certainly let us know in a meeting, right?
I'm sorry?
And if anything, well, I guess the point I'm going to make is, it's, it looks decent to me. I think the direction to look at other cities is good. But I think regardless of what happens, there's going to be some, I think, interaction with the state in the future that I don't think it'll be punitive or really put us in hot water because I think they'll just tell us further clarification.
Yes.
So I, I think we'll be safe in that sense that it's not, it's not life or death if we get it wrong here or if.
Correct.
You go a little, little too strict and then they say, hey, not so much. All right, we'll back off a little bit, no harm, no foul.
Correct. Similar to that is the, I guess, the 800 square foot maximum that, that.
They may later say, you can't do that.
As a limitation. They haven't told us that we can't do that. So I'm, I'm hoping, and my recommendation would be to keep it in place until, because it hasn't been challenged and they haven't said anything about it until it's challenged in another city and then we find out or if they tell us we have to change it.
Correctly.
So be it, then we'll go ahead and process a code amendment to change it.
Yeah, I think, that sounds like a good approach is, well, everyone's kind of taking a wait-and-see approach and I think we'll be in, in a good position to go about it that way.
Usually the state starts fining and suing cities when cities refuse to comply. And they try to fight them on it, but that's not something that.
You would do.
That we typically do here.
At least not in something like this.
Yes.
Thank you. And does anyone else, through the chair?
No.
Additions, deletions to the.
Anyone have any?
Recommendations, the standards? I've got none. I think it looks good to me and like we said, if, if we could beef it up a bit based on what others are doing, great. If not, we'll continue to learn as we go along.
Do you want to add anything? Anyone?
No.
None?
My comments. I was going to say, do we need a, do we need a motion at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll motion to initiate code amendment number 25-01 with specific direction to staff to survey other surrounding cities throughout Southern California with regard to the objective, objective design standards or objective guidelines that other cities have so that we can consider whether or not we want to include those and also whether or not we want to modify or reduce some of our objective standards that we have.
Okay, we have a.
I'll second that.
Roll call please, Joanne. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Vice Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Chair Hang?
Aye.
Motion passes, four zero. Okay, moving on to commission reports, comments and miscellaneous items.
You have nothing for me.
Does anyone? Staff have anything?
That's my comment.
I'm back.
Okay, moving on to community development director's report. Joanne, do you have any items to report?
I only have announcements. On January 20th, there's going to be the 26th Annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration. It's going to be held in the Civic Center between 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And on Friday, January 24th, there will be an open house at the Cortez Park Community Center and Senior Center. The, the development code update cleanup that was recommended, that was reviewed by the city, by the planning commission, it was initially scheduled and noticed for the next city council meeting that the, that will be rescheduled. And I sent the newspaper, I noticed, for the February 18th city council meeting instead. And I'm going to be sending the, the planning commission information on the Planning Commission's Academy. It will be held in, I believe, March of this year. And it will be held up north, I believe, near Paso Robles. Oh, I'm sorry, Santa Rosa, near, near that area. So I'll, I'll go ahead and send the planning commission the information on that through email. And once I send that information to the planning commission, if the planning commission would like me to register you to the conference, please let me know as soon as possible, mainly because they do, the registrations do fill up. And the city does have budget to, to have the planning commission attend the Planning Commission's Academy and pay for the flights and hotel.
Thank you. Any city council action to report? Joanne?
There's nothing to report at this time.
Okay, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank.